Stephanie?
Here.
Nate?
Here.
Travis has been excused. Fudge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
It's on agenda. Any additions, corrections?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Right.
Nate?
Aye.
Okay, this is next one is time for people to speak to the council if it's not already on the agenda.
Yep, introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Wendy Claire. I live in, on North Jack, on South Jackson. And I'm here about the road. We were told five years ago it was going to be replaced. I have water. Every time it rains, coming into my ditch. I have a pond. It's coming from both sides because I'm on the corner of Jackson and Lincoln. We also have it in the driveway. And it's gotten to the point now, the neighbors across the street whose houses are much younger than ours, they're getting puddles in their driveway too. So it's like an infestation for mosquitoes. Just want to know when our roads need to be repainted.
What's your address?
501 South Jackson.
South Jackson is not on our list at the moment to be redone. We've had it sealed, coated, or coated a couple times in the last few years.
And that's just causing the water to out. Because it's running all the way down the road. And I mean, I've got pictures of my pond. In the meantime, I get ice. Because when the snow melts, the end of my driveway is almost too nice. Because the road's here, my driveway's here. Now, come down y'all.
Is that right, like, right across from Fred's?
Yeah. We've had Dave look at it. And it got put on a priority list five years ago. And then it's been taken off a couple times.
Oh, is it Rankin's old house?
Yeah.
Okay. I was trying to figure out which house it was.
Is there a culvert that goes underneath that street?
So we tried cameraing it. And what we're assuming is when they ran the lines, the sewer lines for the new side of the street there.
Grant?
Yep, they locked and cut off that culvert.
The culvert goes across and runs east and west.
So basically, we would drain theirs.
There's times we have to move three sides of our house.
And I know you can come out and have it. Sure, you wrote a router, it still doesn't work.
So basically, we'd have to dig up that street, put a culvert in.
Well, I'm thinking maybe, because I know back in Grant, you guys have sidewalks and curbs. It's maybe possible doing that. The only reason why I'm saying that is because people, when they hit that stop sign, they think it's a contest to go from stop sign to stop sign as fast as they can. And we got kids out there, you know, underground, we don't have any little kids running around. But when we do, I think they're not slowing down, potentially these kids. We had one of them hit a couple years ago.
Travis, do you have any suggestions?
I mean, it does need, we did talk about putting it on our curb and gutters. But like I said, it got, with all the other stuff, it did get pulled off the property or the priority list, so.
All I know is because they were trying to develop that grant area back there before. And waiting for that to come, well, it's pretty well built.
There's my tree and lots back there now. So I mean, all the heavy trucks are basically done going up and down that road. The other thing I have is my ash trees on the north side of my house, which are supposedly city trees. I had a branch that fell down two weeks ago. One of our Lisbon officers probably sat for an hour because there was a wire that came down with it. But I complain almost every year to kind of get that tested for ash form. Because there's dead branches on everything else. Nothing's happened with it either. And this branch just fell down that storm a couple weeks ago. But I've had branches come down for no reason.
True. Is it in city property or is it your property?
It's.
According to the police officer, it's in.
Yeah, because we tried to put an no parking sign up back there. And they told us we couldn't do it because it's city property. So it's by the easement.
Are you familiar, Rick, with what they're talking about?
No.
Do you know who the officer was?
No, I do not. It was the Saturday morning. I know that.
Who's your OC, uh, officer?
No, I'm not anyone.
It was my what?
English.
No, when the branch fell down the other morning.
Oh, no, I know who it was.
Wasn't Rick?
Huh?
Wasn't Rick?
No.
So was it a male or a female?
Male.
So Frank, yes. So it was Jeff?
It was Jeff.
I was outside that morning. I was trying to pull myself. Because I've gotten used to pulling branches. And then I would walk around and then, oop, there's wires though. I'm not going anywhere.
Travis, why don't we look at, I know, I mean, but I mean, I, I've noticed water there too when I drove down that street.
There must have been in it for a shark.
But I mean, you're absolutely right.
Oh, don't say that.
It needs a culvert to do that. I mean, there was one there before.
Right.
And somehow it's either got demolished or didn't get through it or whatever.
It's all part of the, what, hydrobes.
I know the end of our drive was the original roadway level. And now it's 10 inches below the roadway.
And we're all getting like the runoff to the rock because when they chip sealed it, in our drives too. And ice went down in my road, or into my yard because I was getting washed down. So I get debris every time I go yard.
It was one of the streets that was done yet last year.
Yeah. That was one of the ones I think I'll phone call about last year.
Okay.
But as far as the ash trees, we were not, I was never notified about that.
So can you send somebody out to check that out on the tree at least? I mean, we can do that relatively quickly.
We'll take a look at the tree tomorrow. We were not made aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll get with Dave to have him when he's in the area to take another look at that. Just to give us an idea of what it could, what could possibly done, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any more public comments? Okay, moving on. Request of the Lisbon History Center to assist in heating and air conditioning repairs. Eric, that you. What was your cost?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
We have, but we just got finished.
You might want to explain what's going on, just so in case somebody doesn't know this on the.
Well, we had somebody come out and look at our secondary heat and air conditioning units. And they were installed in 2006. And there was a hole in one of the coolant lines that they said could not be repaired because if solder or something got into one of those lines, it could like get into the system and actually blow up one of the units. So we had two people look at it. Both of them said it was impractical to fix for that reason. So we got estimates. The one company wasn't not able to get the unit until later on in August. And since the other company, even though they were a little more expensive, we went with them because they were able to get it in just a couple weeks. And with sauerkraut days coming, we needed to get it fixed. Both estimates came in between 11, I think it was 11-4 and 11-7. And that was worst case scenario. But like I said, we didn't receive the bill yet as to what it cost. They replaced, they had to replace all the coolant lines. Get it on the roof, outside, all three of the units inside for the three zones that are in the building. Run all new lines, all new communication lines. And it came, it's got a five-year warranty on it. So we're currently doing fundraising to try and raise the money. Because $12,000 is a huge blow to the History Center. If we have to take it out of pocket without rejecting and pay it. Right now, we have a little over three grand that we've raised so far. We got some money back coming up at sauerkraut days to help raise some money. And then also, we're planning an event in September to raise some more money. And basically, we don't want to deplete, to deplete our funds to have to pay for this. And I know that I had talked to the borough, and I wasn't up to be any, but I know Doug had also mentioned the city possibly being able to help out with covering some of our costs.
So are you asking for the city to pay for what you don't have fundraised until you get it? And then you're paying the city back? Or are you asking the city to?
I was thinking asking, you know, more of just a donation from the city. Like, once we get the bill, we figure out, suggested economy, I talked to, you know, maybe the city would pay 25% and be responsible for the remaining 75. And, you know, 12 grand, that's, 12 grand being the high end, that'd be a $2,000 donation from the city. But I don't know, I mean, what the bill is right now. Like I said, we just got it done a week ago, so.
And I guess if, if it was something like that, then, and if you had 3,000, the city gave you 3,000. Or it would be 4,000, actually, I guess, if you're dividing it by threes. So anyways, if the city, if you had 4,000, or if we, you had 3,000, and we gave you 4,000, that's 7,000. So would we, would you be requesting that the city pay the other five?
No.
Until you guys get it raised?
No, what we're doing is, if we have to, we don't want it, but if we have to, we have a CD that we can cash in to pay for part of it. And then through fundraising, we would re, you know, come up, like, if you guys gave us a portion of it, we would raise the rest of it to basically recoup the funds that we have to use right now. So it'd be an ongoing fundraising effort for us. We're, we're just asking for a donation from the city to help pay. And then the rest of it, we would come up with our own.
And I know that we talked before and we, there's something somewhere, can you?
I, I can come up with some funds too. It is a city building, so I don't see a problem with us helping with this project. I mean, we did help Southeast Lynn with the kitchen renovation that they, they did. I was fortunate to have money left in my general budget that I wasn't going to spend last year. So we assisted them using that. And I believe we could find some 3,000 to 4,000 to help the History Center.
Do you know what, what we helped the community center, what was that total?
Uh, it was close to 3,000.
My personal opinion is, it's a city-owned building. I mean, it's not, they didn't plan on this. I mean, if, if the air conditioner went out at City Hall here, we'd pay for the whole thing.
I agree.
If Travis had a well go down, we'd pay for the whole thing. I mean, not a well, I mean, but, you know, I mean, there's a big difference between your heating and air conditioning going down or remodeling. Giving the money for remodeling. So that, I think, I think, I think the city should pay for the whole thing. I don't think that should be there. I mean, it's our building.
What happens to the heat? Does that affect the heat?
Yes, in the weather, it's our secondary heat, so it saves on our gas prices. The boiler is 13 years old. And last fall, we put about $700 into that. Because we didn't have the secondary heat, and so the boiler was running more often. Parts were wearing out. Basically, this system takes the chill out of the air. Because once the building gets, the brick and everything gets cold, because it's not insulated very well. Because when it was remodeled by the previous owner, he didn't give us jobs remodeling. So there's not a lot of insulation between the brick and the entire. So when the brick gets cold, the building gets cold. And this helps keep the air circulated and keeps it warm in there. So the boiler isn't running 24/7.
Well, I know the History Center's put a lot of money into that building and the flooring. And, and so is the city with the back wall. I think it's for.
Well, the back wall was insured.
It had water leak in it.
Yeah, it had water leak. I didn't know the insurance covered it all. Anyway, I, I think we should treat, you know, the History Center and Southeast Lynn as renters of a city building that benefits everyone in the community. That we should go ahead and give that 3,000. And then you continue with your fundraising. And you can talk to us again later if you still have a problem with the bill.
I just look at it, I got, I got an apartment that I got. And if that furnace goes out in that apartment, I don't make my tenants pay for that furnace.
Right.
I mean, that's part of my, I mean, that's my deal. I mean, I own the building.
Well, I believe that, I do believe that we should pay for part of it. But I believe that the $3,000 that has already been donated for that purpose should be used for that purpose. Because whoever donated, donated it for that. But I believe that the city, I would be comfortable with the city paying for the rest of it.
Is this, is it in the budget to pay for the rest of it?
Probably not that much. It just, with this early in the budget, it would, it'd be hard for me to, to tell. Because we've just, I mean, we're only a couple weeks into the budget. I would have to pull it from somewhere. But I, I feel comfortable going to 3,000 or 4,000.
That's where I was thinking, just do the three that's being requested. And, and then if there's still a problem, you know, maybe you'll get lucky, like some programs have. Get somebody to give you a big chunk of money.
Well, he.
Might have to rename the building.
They have two fundraisers coming, so they'll be okay. You have two fundraisers coming, which you should be okay on those.
Well, in all places, we haven't even got the bill yet. I don't know.
It could come in lower.
Exactly.
Do, do we just want to wait then until the bills are done and the fundraisers are done and see where we're at? Or when does this bill have to be paid?
I would guess when I got it, in three days.
And when are your fundraisers?
Well, the sauerkraut days and the other one in September.
When would you, if you have to draw the CD, would there be a penalty though?
Yes, it depends on, like, where it's at cycle and how much interest it's in. I went and talked to the bank and they gave me the figure, but they said, you know, that changes every day. Because they're paying the interest on the CD daily. So, but, I mean, it's equivalent to, you know, what we're getting if their interest rate. And interest rates are so low right now, that, you know, there's not a lot of money coming out of CDs, so.
So it would probably be best if we could give them something now, or what we feel comfortable giving them. And then maybe in the long run, if the funds don't come in, we could assist at, at that time too.
I'll, I'll move to approve the 3,000 at this time. Look at things later, see how you're doing.
Do we have a second to that? Do we have a second? Motion failed.
I'll make a motion to give them 4,000.
We have a motion for 4,000. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Deb? Deb, sorry. I just write that down here too. Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Nate.
Okay. So we will be giving them 4,000, right?
It failed, 2 to 2.
Who else?
Doug, Nate.
Oh, okay. It failed.
I make a motion that we pay for it.
We have a motion that it be paid for. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Failed. Need to come back after sauerkraut days.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Discussion on possible decision on pump or truck repairs.
You let me go. You made me talk earlier, so you can talk now. Um, we discussed this a little bit at the last council meeting. We did, Travis did find information that it would run about $18,000 to bring the truck to where it would need to be for us to use it for leaf vacuuming, brush pickup and other miscellaneous things. And also put a plow on the truck. Fortunately, KCRG heard about it and we made the news tonight. Because they were fascinated that this actually could be done with a, with a truck. So they, it was on the 5 o'clock news. So we're still looking for guidance at this meeting to, if that's something that you guys want to go ahead and, and do. Or if you would rather not do it and for us to continue looking for another dump truck.
And where, where is this money coming from?
This would be coming out of road use.
I thought we talked about maybe just solid waste because of the brushing.
And some could come out of solid waste. Because we're going to be using it for brush pickup and leaf vacuuming. But we do, we do have some money left in road use. Because we had 30,000 that we did not budget to spend this year in road use. So we, our revenues are going to exceed expenditures. But that was in preparation for sink holes that might pop up or something like that. So we could use it, we could split the funds.
And so, refresh my memory, if we do this, it's going to get us through for the leaf vac always. But we're also going to be able to use it for the dump truck.
Yeah.
Until we are able to find one. And then when we find one, we're going to keep this one as like a backup?
Yeah.
Plow.
Plow, we can all snow with it. I mean, we're not going to want to, it's not going to be meant, I mean, the plow we're putting on is a commercial plow. But it's basically like the same plows that are on at one time. They're not meant for bouncing up and down the roads. They're meant for like parking lots and everything like that, so this is.
And so what that means for the future is if we have a big storm, we would have an extra truck or an extra person that could go out and do some plowing?
Right.
Once we get our other one?
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve Travis's plan.
Do we have a second to it?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing. First one is a resolution 48-2018 approving 28E agreement with Lynn County Public Health on rental and nuisance inspection.
We have an agreement right now with Lynn County Public Health to come and do inspections on properties on a complaint, complaint basis. Can't talk tonight. Since we are starting back to do the rental inspections, we had to adjust the 28E to include that. So they will be doing them as requested, not just on a complaint basis. And we did have an episode here in the last couple weeks of a house that was not a rental property. But it was a personally owned property that needed Lynn County to come out and do an inspection. And since we don't specify in our agreement with them that they can do privately owned homes, we needed to add that into the agreement also. So I did give you guys a copy of the agreement. Mark has reviewed the agreement, made some changes. And Lynn County Public Health and Mark both agree with the final draft that you guys were presented with. So we would need to give borough permission to sign that agreement.
Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Resolution 49, 2018, certify Lynn for mowing at 809 West Main.
If you recall, we did one of these at the last meeting. We actually had to mow this property twice. We were not paid for either time that we mowed it. We've given them 30 days to respond to our letter requesting a payment. And we did not receive a response. So we would like to go ahead and certify it against the property taxes.
Make a motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Public hearing regarding ordinance, 164-24, fence regulations. We need to set a public hearing for that?
Yes, PNC met on Thursday and they discussed it. They've come up with a recommendation to present to the council. So we would need to hold a public hearing and then three readings to change the ordinance.
Make a, I'll make a motion that we set it August 13th.
We have a motion for August 15th?
13th.
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 Second.
And a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
And I did set a copy, it wasn't included in your packet, but I did set a copy of the changes up in front of you tonight. So you can have time to review it before the public hearing.
New business?
Don't have any at this time.
2018 legislative summary.
Um, I just did receive some correspondence, a summary of the legislative session. There were only a few changes that pertain to us. One of them was relating to alcoholic beverages control. The other one was relating to texting or using a mobile phone while operating in a commercial vehicle. And the other one was to do with submitting a duplicate application for retail cigarette permits. So once, when we do our codification next time, we will update it to include those changes.
You don't need any action on that, do you?
No.
Okay. Announcement recipient of 2018 CDVG Housing Rehab Board.
You'll be happy to know that we, I applied for the housing rehab grant again this year. And it normally doesn't happen that a city gets it two years in a row, but we did. We've got it for next year. So we'll be looking for four to six homes that can qualify to get up to $25,000, $24,999 worth of repairs to their homes, so.
And is the area already set or?
The area is set and it's larger than it was last year.
And do you, can you just say it?
Um, I have a map here at the City Hall. They're welcome to, to come look. It, this time, it's going to include this north, east section. But it's also going to go farther west this time.
But nothing south of Maine, is that correct?
South of Maine, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, it gives people an idea anyway.
But I do have a map here, so anybody can come take a look to see if they're in that area. And they'll do a pre-application process and then they'll do a regular application process.
Okay, good for you. Good for us. Uh, city engineer report?
Dave is not here tonight, so Travis, I will.
Do you have anything public works director?
Okay, first, for the development doing at school, or the addition, we got to do some fire hydrant testing. And I pushed it off as long as I could to wrap that up with us doing a regular hydrant flushing. So we're not stirring the system up multiple times. Just letting you guys know. And we'll put it on social media starting probably Wednesday. We're going to start on that and finish some hydrant testing and flushing for the town. So it probably will stir up the water system. Just let it run and it should clear out. We started rocking the alleys today. Hopefully, by tomorrow afternoon, we'll have, have all those taken care of. The sewer project has started. We've had some road bumps. Connie and I are having another, another meeting with the contractors and the engineers tomorrow morning. Some of their notifications was vague that they gave out and some they didn't even give out. So people that are concerned about the letters they've got, we just told them just to calm down. We're, we're not happy with the verbiage in it. We'll get it straightened up and then they'll get another notification when they're in their area. And last but not least, I'd like you guys to think about it. Next council meeting, on our pool hours for sauerkraut days. With them moving everything over to the school, there's going to be no ice cream social and stuff in the park. Thursday night, nobody was in there last year. And we left it, left it open. Very few people use it Saturday. Sunday would possibly be the only day that, you know, people might use it. I just, we spend more time cleaning up after, after people abuse it than we do actually people using it. So we've done it every way with even up to the old pool that we had. We just closed it completely. So I just kind of want to see what you guys think. Have, think about it for a couple weeks and let us know.
Say it. Okay. Brick?
Said nothing.
Oh, nothing, I'm sorry. Fire chief report? City administrator?
Um, I just have a few things. We completed the fiscal year. So right now, I'm working on the annual financial report and also the road use or the street finance, finance report. Auditors have already been here two days and they're coming back July 30th and 31st. Are requested to be first on the list so we can get it done and get it over with and get that, get, get them out of here. IMWCA will be coming July 31st to do an audit also. It's something they do every year. Um, like Travis said, we're meeting with the engineers tomorrow at 9:30. Hopefully, we can get communication open a little bit better. And finally, we got a schedule this morning, I mean, this morning.
got a schedule this mor, I mean, this morning, after I had to make several, a couple phone calls Friday evening, and push. And, but we finally got a schedule this morning, so it gives us a better idea of when they're actually going to be in town and what neighborhoods they're going to be in. So when we get calls from the residents, we, we can explain. They had movie at the park Friday night, which they had a pretty good turnout. We also had two self-defense classes that were offered by Park and Rec on Saturday. First one was for middle age, middle school age, and a little bit younger. And the second one was for high school and adults. They were, the first one was really well attended. The second one was a little less. But we had a lot of phone calls, people that were either at the state baseball game or other, other places that day. So Park and Rec is looking at the possibility of maybe holding another one later on. We did offer it free to the public, and Park and Rec paid for the instructors to teach the class. So wanted to let you guys know that we did cut down, I sent you an email, we cut down some trees. We did have a few people that were concerned. I talked to one gentleman today. I think he had sent a, an email to Burrow. I don't know if you got it or not. But what had happened when we started cutting down the trees is, we only had a few that we were looking at at the time, but once Si got out there, there were a few trees that were in a lot worse shape than the ones that we knew needed to come down. So we had to take a few down at the last minute, so we were able to send letters or notifications to those people. So they were a little upset because they weren't told ahead of time that it was going to happen. But once we knew those trees needed to come down, we went and knocked on doors to, to make them aware of it. We've already worked, talked to the tree board, so they know when they apply for the next grant that those trees will need to be replaced. And everybody's fine now, but like I said, we had to block the street off for a while, but it just, once Si went up in the trees with his camera and showed me the pictures, these trees were completely hollow in the inside. So we had no choice, but Travis and I had to make the choice to, to take them down. So we've used a lot of our tree budget already and just on East Main Street, but those trees are very old, and we've got the car show coming up for Sauerkraut Days, and we just couldn't take the chance of the branches falling down on those cars.
Do you know when he's on grind stops?
I don't know if he's going to get to them before Sauerkraut Days or not.
We, we were kind of hoping to get a bid, or not a bid, a bill from him, from the work he's done so far, so we can see where we're sitting with our budget.
He did give us a reduced rate for his service because he was already there that day, so we made a decision to do all of them the same day if we got a cheaper price.
Have we camered or, or personally inspected every tree in town that's a city tree, at least?
No.
Okay. I assume you guys heard about what happened on July 4th in Rock Island, so that's...
The DNR went through, three years ago, four years ago, and did an inventory of every tree.
Five years ago.
Yeah, five years. Did a walk-through of the trees. They came back last, this last fall with me, and we verified the ash board. We didn't go to every ash tree and inspect that. We just had to verify that it was here. And after that, he showed us the, what to look for, for the ash trees. A lot of these trees are, unless you can get that 40 and 50 foot in the air, you're not going to see, see the, and not, not talking ash trees, I'm talking the regular trees, like what we had to take down. You won't see it. And that's what happened, is Si was up looking at how to take down another tree, and glanced over, and saw, I need to go over there and check that tree out. So...
We do have several other ash trees that we know have the bore in them. A lot of them aren't city trees. There's a few that we've looked at that we're not sure yet exactly whose they are, but there's going to be more that are going to have to...
Well, I remember the tree survey, and John, correcting if I'm wrong, weren't there, weren't there 102 ash trees in town?
102, you're exactly right.
Yeah.
There was. We've cut down some.
We've taken a few, yeah.
Pretty close.
But there were quite a few. And there's, there's quite a few more in, in personal property that aren't city trees.
And that's part of the, like, so, say, Si's working on, say, we deem their trees that they were talking about earlier have to come down. Well, if there's two ash trees across the street that we can verify has it, I mean, we'll get it for the time, time to take it down instead of having to pay for them to mobilize it. So it's almost a third of the cost. So that's what we've been doing with the ash trees.
So if we notice it on private property, like if you guys happen to notice that a tree on private property needs to be taken down, do we send anything to the residents and just say, hey?
We haven't yet because we're just kind of starting the whole process of finding them right now. I mean, we knew...
I don't know. We can't even tell somebody to take it down.
No, I'm just saying like a heads up, like, hey, we were out checking the trees, and we were checking the city trees, and we happened to notice that yours...
We, we did with Jack Wolf's rental property. He had a couple that when we were doing our inspection, we noticed that he had it pretty bad in two of them, so...
Because I'm not, I don't know if everybody would know.
Yeah. I didn't until Si showed me exactly what to look for, and it was obvious. The last thing I have is, we're moving along on the concept plan for the sports complex. It's gotten, we're gotten to the point where there's not much we can do without hiring a civil engineer to be able to tell us exactly what can be put on the space that we have. I worked with Todd for a while, and he recommended a, a civil engineer that I was familiar with. I've worked with before. They're really great people. I contacted them, and I met with them twice now. And they're going to work with me on this plan, and they gave me an extremely reasonable price. It's average from $1,700 to $2,000. So I jumped on it since it was under my $5,000 limit. So they're actually even going to help me on a grant that I'm working on right now because in order for me to submit this grant, I have to submit a picture. So they're working on that picture for me right now. Our engineering firm, their civil department is in Clearland, Des Moines, so for us to pay them to come back and forth would, would probably be five times that much.
More than the 2K.
So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. We're moving forward. As soon as I have first pictures, I will present it to you, so to get your input, and anybody else who wants to give some input. But I just want to let you know that I was moving on with that. That's all I have.
Hey Connie, we're going to something. What are we going to again?
In September?
Yeah, when is that?
In September, the Iowa League of Cities Conference.
And what's the date?
Uh...
You don't know? Okay. I didn't write it in my calendar, and I just need to know.
September 12th through 14th.
Yep, there you go, right there.
Look at Nate go.
Read your mail once in a while, you know it.
Well, I had it, but I...
I don't know if she's on the list for a cityscape right now. Do you, did you get a cityscape?
Well, I mean, it's not, it's up here, but, yeah, that's me. And I had it, but I just forgot to put it in my calendar.
Okie dokie. Mayor's report, I don't have anything. Nate, do you have anything?
Nothing today.
John?
Yeah, Southeast Lynn is instigating some new programs. They have a bingo and breakfast on Friday mornings. They're having their movie on Wednesdays for the kids with popcorn and a drink. Thursdays, they got a kid program. These are in the afternoon. Food pantry's been doing well, and people might be surprised on how much you can make and still get free food once a week. If you got eight in the family, it's $75,000, around that, if you're below that, you get free food. If you're an individual, it's much, much less than that. Of course, I don't have the figure, more around $20,000 or less. But if you need, interested in any of that, give Southeast Lynn a call, and they'll give you the details and times. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I don't have much. Congratulations to the girls softball team. They place third in state, so that's a big accomplishment. And then the boys are still going. They play Thursday against North Lynn, so good luck to them. Hope they can finish out. They are still undefeated, so that's quite a feat at this point in the season. So congrats to those boys. I think that's it.
Doug?
I see they got something on Zola Lane. Are they going to be putting poles in here pretty soon?
They are going to start this fall, they said. Whether, whether they mean August or September, I'm not sure yet, but I'm, hopefully they'll let me know sooner. But I did reach out to them, and they said this fall. Emerald Green will be moving the trees in the next couple of weeks. They had me reach out to a contractor, but they said they would pay for the, what it costs to, to move those trees. So I got a bid from Emerald Green, and they accepted it, and they'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks.
And can you have somebody look at the computers? Mine still would not download. I mean, it's there, it just won't down, it won't let me open it.
Will they open? Okay.
Now it's, now it's updated.
Well, they put new, well, they put new trays in where the ones that are dead? Or why are they going to be there?
Yes. Well, we will have to pay for that expense, but they'll, they'll put them in, but we'll replace those. There are two trees that did not survive at our, from our last grant, and I did talk to the Cali who provided those trees, and they're, they're under warranty, so they will replace those in the fall.
How did we get them mowed from school?
No, we did not. They kept, kept prolonging it. And we're talking to Drayton and Connie. We actually demoed a different mower. I told Rod that we were probably going to go in a different direction.
Anything else? Employee review, discussion on possible revision of contract.
And I've requested to go into closed session for this.
Okay.